Good afternoon. Welcome, thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, May 2nd. First on the agenda this evening, we have two proclamations. I will do the first one. I've asked Councilmember Sternad to read the second one. First one is for National Police Week. Have the chief come up front?
Okay. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Marion Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Constable Peter B. Martin of the Marion Police Department, whose end of watch was October twenty-third, nineteen oh five. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-fifth candlelight vigil on the evening of May third, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May fourteenth through twentieth. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff that day. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abouasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby designate May fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week in Marion, and publicly salute the service of law officers, law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Mr. Hanson, do you have this one?
All right. This will be the proclamation. Whereas Marion is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our communities is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code of Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials, who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, play, and work. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild land fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of the public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, substantial, excuse me, sustainable and affordable buildings that are essential to our property and prosperity. And whereas Safety for All Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month of twenty twenty-three encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and substantial construction. Career oppor- excuse me, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all who benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to us all by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Randy Sternad, on behalf of Nicholas Abouasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do here proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-three, as Building Safety Month, and encourage our residents to join us as we participate in the Building Safety Month activities.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is a presentation from Brooke Proudy, who's the Director of Uptown Marion. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you, Mayor Abouasli. Oh, they're up there. So I brought one because they're very heavy, and it's only one of me. So these are the awards we got at the Main Street Iowa Development Awards this year. On April twenty-first, we received two awards, one for the Seventh Avenue Streetscape in North Plaza as the best Main Street placemaking project in the state for this past year, and one for the Broad and Main Project, which was the best Main Street housing project. This housing project more than doubled the amount of housing in our district, which went a long way for that application. In the press release that we sent out, that's also on the website, it describes the projects and just a little description of why they won the award. We also nominated five projects this year. We nominated the West End Shops for the best Main Street Business Recruitment Project for their entrepreneurial spirit over there. The Shop-In Marion Event for Main Street Business Support Project. Small-Scale Placemaking, we nominated the Marion Community Peace Tree, and then the other two awards we won. So we took a group of thirty people, which is the most we've ever taken to the awards. Thank you, Mayor Nick and Gage for coming to that event. And we had a great representation of city staff there, and also our partners on both projects. Each community gets to honor a leader within their community for the awards, so fifty-two leaders across the state. And we nominated locally Jacob Pahn for his work on the Streetscape Project and his leadership through that. So Jacob was unable to attend because it was his wedding weekend, so we made a cardboard cutout of him and took that to the awards.
That was the hit of the whole.
It was. Debbie said it was the first time it ever had a cardboard cutout at the event. I think he had a costume on within the first ten minutes of being back in City Hall, so. So I have two awards certificates and a couple of copies here for you guys to keep here at City Hall. I want to thank you for your participation in both of these projects.
Go ahead. We're gonna have Ryan accept the awards from you on behalf of the city. Should we get a picture?
You want to hold the certificates or you want?
I'll hold the certificates. The certificates are light.
Yes, yeah.
There you go.
I love that you wore your bright pink shirt.
Thank you, Brooke. Thanks for all you do and for your great partnership.
Thank you.
And it's always so much fun to go to those events. It's always a great celebration of what's going on around the states and all the, all the, all the bright spots. And we learn so much about what other communities are doing. You see communities working really hard to create vibrancy and energy in their, in their towns, and it's, it's very encouraging, and you get a lot of great ideas, and Marion is always well-featured at, at all those events. So thanks to all the great work of everyone that, that works on these projects and appreciate all your, all your efforts. Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Chief Fagan. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Summer is right around the corner, and there are so many great events our community is hosting over the coming weeks and months. It also means it's time to review the fireworks policy and have a discussion for any further direction. This presentation tonight is coming to you as an annual request by council to review the city's policy related to fireworks. Tonight, we're going to cover several objectives. First, we're going to review the current policy. We're going to review the list of comparable cities and their policy. We're going to provide updated information on calls for service and citations, and we're going to provide a staff recommendation and receive direction. The state of Iowa requires communities to allow for the sale of fireworks, but does not require communities to allow them to be used. Each community can determine their own policies if and when fireworks can be used within the state code. So in November of two thousand seventeen, Ordinance Number seventeen twenty-nine was adopted. With this ordinance, it is lawful to use, ignite, or explode any fireworks permitted by state law on the following dates: July fourth, from twelve PM until eleven PM; December thirty-first, from six PM until twelve-thirty AM on January first. Firework sales are allowed from June first through July eighth and December tenth through January third per Iowa code. Last year, the state did make a change regarding the zoning requirements for fireworks sales from industrial only to now any zoning which allows for retail sales. So this table is a list of our comparable cities, in which you'll see that Marion is one of four communities, which allows for the use of fireworks, and it does show the, the dates and the times there. Marion is one of four communities which allows them to be used. Note that Cedar Rapids' policy does not allow the use of fireworks in their community as it pertains to the next slide. So reviewing calls for service and citations, and again, looking at the trend for calls of service, we're seeing over the past three years a downward trend, and also a downward trend in citations or charges. Note that trend also extends into Cedar Rapids as well, but the rate at which they're receiving calls for service with a policy not allowing fireworks to be used. Community fireworks policies differ in communities across the country, and in my experience, strong education campaigns greatly assist in reducing injuries and property loss. Our staff is sensitive to the triggers of these devices and how they impact different populations across our community. But based on the trending data, there is evidence to support the current policy is effective within the current windows for fireworks use. Is the staff's recommendation to not change the current policy, we'll continue to evaluate calls for service and citations and bring that back to you annually. We'll also closely monitor tent and exposure concerns this year and provide more specific recommendations for future policy development. And lastly, please mark your calendars for the fireworks and Fireflies Event on July third out of Lyle Park. There will be live music and, of course, fireworks. Happy to hear any questions that you have, or any policy direction, or any additional information that you'd like to bring forward this afternoon.
Questions? Chief? Yes, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, if you go back to the slide, it shows the number of calls. I mean, back in two thousand seventeen, that's when the state made it legal for everybody, and everybody went really crazy that year. The other high year, high-marked year is twenty twenty, when everybody was tired of being cooped up from the pandemic, and fireworks were absolutely bonkers that year. I think the other thing that has affected it, if it all by a little, maybe a little higher usage last year, was the fact that they were not, the state is not letting the city control where we can sell those, where fireworks can be sold. So, I mean, you look back to the number of places that were available for sale back in two thousand seventeen, those were much more voluminous than it was even last year when it expanded. But if you go back to twenty-one, twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-one, where we started controlling that by having it in the industrial areas only, I think that was probably the right package. But again, what we could control, I guess I like the ordinance the way it is. People are gonna shoot off the fireworks. You go back prior to two thousand seventeen, and you look at the number of calls in two thousand sixteen prior to the ordinance, when the state made it legal, I don't think there's a lot of difference between sixteen and twenty twenty-two. So people are gonna shoot them off, they're gonna get the fireworks. We cannot stop the sale of them. We cannot restrict it any more than we have. If we could, we would probably. So I'm satisfied with the way it is.
I agree with the recommendation.
So one, two, what? No citations. I think that's the biggest question, and I think there's an issue. We always have it. You hear the noises, you don't know where they're coming from. By the time you get there, it's too late. Some pieces with that, but I guess if I were a community member and we hear, we hear about it, and I have a dog that we can't go to the fireworks because she is absolutely in a panic, even on medication, hiding and terrified to go outside every time we hear these. So I feel for our veterans, I feel for people with young children, I feel for people with animals that are terribly frightened by this, that there are concerns because there are always folks who use the entire week to be shooting those things off despite the fact we say no. So is there any? I mean, if I, when I ask that question, I'm like, I would look to this and say, oh, well, there's no citations. I'll shoot them off on the second, I'll shoot them off on the third, I'll... Or is that just, we tend to warn people to knock it off, and if they won't knock it off, then we use a citation?
Last year was the first year we went to municipal infractions for it. Instead of us having to actually see them shoot them off, if we saw evidence in somebody's yard, we could, we could cite the homeowner with the municipal infraction. We didn't have any that we found last year. You look at the call numbers, the calls were down, a hundred and sixteen calls. The majority of those that year were on July fourth, again, before or after the, the starting times.
That's, because that's my question. We're talking about it then, but when we talk, so when we talk about calls on, a hundred and sixteen calls in twenty twenty-two, that could have been on June thirtieth? That could have been on, or is that on July four?
Most of them are gonna be on July fourth. Where they're going past midnight.
They're going past midnight, okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Great, looks like you're thinking about something special.
Yeah, well, so I, not changing our, our enforcement posture and anything about our ordinance, you know, I think this is, I think, is sort of a blend of the right balance to say that we would ever consider not allowing them, just puts us all in an unenforceable condition. And, but there's a couple, there's one data point that I would hope that we can begin to track in the future, and that is, do we have any visibility to personal injury by use of, of fireworks? And if, if it's convenient to find that out, I think it would be useful in these periodic updates to understand. Did we have, even though we had last year in twenty twenty-two, zero citations, were there any severe injuries that were caused by use of fireworks? Because that becomes an education piece, I think. The other part, and this dovetails off of what Sarah was commenting on. Chief, you, you answered the question that I had, and that is municipal infraction issuance. I, based on the calls I have received, I, it's fair for me to suggest, you know, I think I know a couple of potential hotspots that we ought to just keep an eye on. Now, I would much rather be responsive to the calls that come in, but I think there are pockets of activity that we might have some intelligence on that suggests, you know, folks are, are not being good neighbors throughout the entire week. And they're creating, you know, they're creating potential fire hazard as well as injury hazard and the like, on those days where it's not even permitted. So I, I don't, I guess I'm sort of on the verge of just mumbling through this, and I would just have to say, I, I don't know what else we can do. If people are responsible, there's generally never going to be a problem, but unfortunately, we have individuals who choose not to be responsible, and that's where the problem motion comes forward. Anyway, I, I'm, that was more of an opinion than anything useful for policy development.
Your Honor, if, if I may, I would also encourage people to continue calling and making those reports, because even though we know that there may be pockets out there, we don't necessarily know exactly where they are, and if we get a complaint, it's gonna go and get checked out. And again, as far as I know, we are the only city that's done something like our nuisance code, where we made it a nuisance to have or allow people to shoot, to either shoot them off yourself or to allow people to shoot off fireworks outside of the permitted times in our nuisance code. I don't know of anywhere else that's doing that. That was highly publicized last year, and so we're, we're prepared to follow through with that this year. We didn't, we didn't have the opportunity to last year, so.
Okay. So that, that ends up being a part of our communication strategy on this, I would imagine.
Absolutely.
Maybe what we ought to do to follow through on that is get some, talk to our reporter at the Gazette, and maybe get some, something in the paper at the proper time so that our citizens around here know what our policies are. That they can't shoot them off during these hours, but if they are cited, here's the ramifications of that. So it'd be a good reminder. Obviously, we can do that in our newsletter and onsite, but maybe pulling from the Gazette and using those sources as well to communicate that.
Do we have leeway to, like, stiffen the fines, or?
So the criminal penalties last year were part of what triggered us to do the municipal infraction, because the criminal penalties are, are pretty nominal in, across the state. But if it's a municipal infraction, on your first time out, that's a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine, and it's a thousand dollars for every time after that. Those are much stiffer than the criminal penalties.
I mean, I'm still of the opinion that as a matter of principle, there's no way you can use fireworks in an urban setting and not impact your neighbors. So as a matter of principle, I'm just, I'm for a total ban. And we've always tried to be consistent with Cedar Rapids on, on lots of different things, so. You know, to say that people are gonna use them anyway, people run red lights anyway, but we're still gonna try to, you know, we still ban it. Right? So, you know, that's, I, I, it's just, that's my opinion. I know I'm minority opinion, but I just don't think that there's any way to use them safely without affecting, without affecting your neighbor. I mean, it's just impossible. So.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. This very conversation is, is for that type of direction for policy evolution. And so if there is direction from, from council for further tailoring and transition of policy, let us know, and, and we will.
And, and I think that most, most people are, are law-abiding. You know, you're always gonna get people who are gonna break the rules, but most people, when they know something is not allowed, they're gonna think twice about it, and, and abide by the law. So even, you know, I know we're gonna have people who are gonna buy them and want to use them, but maybe they can go somewhere else where it's allowed. Just my opinion. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have the, a review of the upcoming agenda. No item is marked prior to A seven on page two of the agenda. Any questions or discussion, or? Any discussion on any, any of those items, A, one through A six? All right, A seven? Mr. Lucas?
Afternoon. So we're here to talk about the health insurance renewal, health and dental renewal for July one. First, we'll review health, dental, and then we'll just go through our impact employees and our recommendations afterwards. So this year is really meant to, or this renewal is meant to get us to the January renewal. So currently, we have a few projects going on, so I wanted to provide a few specifics that we've talked about in the past that we know that have been noted by council. So our current health insurance plan design, we do have a fifty thousand dollar stop-loss. And then last year, we did mention that the police deductibles went up. So there, these are mentioned. These are also staying current for this next renewal. We are recommending a six-month renewal, as well as we are now, based in the premium is based off of Walmart's recommendations, which, these recommendations are based off of utilization and plan design. And so we are expecting a twelve-point-three percent increase on the, the health insurance premiums. And so this next six months, we do have the Employee Experience Committee doing some research on other plan designs as well for the health insurance to help with those cost savings for, for the city and the employee both. Next, we have dental. Again, these were the variables that changed last year, but again, they're still staying current. Our dental plan is through Delta Dental, and we still offer a base and buy-up. So we are increasing or recommending an increase to the dental buy-up premiums, and this is largely due to enrollment. So when we published the rate decrease for buy-up, we had some people jump to the buy-up, which also then increased our utilization, which is also kind of what Walmart's recommending, or, I'm sorry, Delta Dental recommended for the increase. So the impact to employees, employees will see a twelve-point-three, or would see a twelve-point-three percent increase for the health insurance. And then we do see that the dollar amounts you see there for the, just the dental buy-up. The dental base is still gonna be free for employees. And then with these two changes, we are obligated to host a mini open enrollment for anyone wishing to change either their health elections or their dental elections as well. I did want to mention the things that are not changing. Again, thi- this is just to help get a full picture, but also let you know that it is on our radar. So the cost share is still the same for the twelve, fifteen percent employee cost share, and then we also still offer the wellness incentive as we have in the past. The things that are not changing this specific renewal are the fifty thousand dollar stop-loss. We are planning on doing some research and bringing a more comprehensive recommendation for the January renewal. So as I mentioned earlier, our next steps, currently, we have the Experience Committee. We are partnering with PDCM in researching those different plan designs and coming up with the most impactful plan for, that meets the needs for both the city and the employees. We plan to follow up with council later this fall on the recommendations that have been created by the Experience Committee. Also, last year, we did talk about establishing a health insurance reserve fund policy. That is still on our radar, and we are partnering with PDCM in order to create that recommendation for moving forward. I think that's, any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Lucas? Anyone? Okay, I guess you covered it all, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas. All right, that takes us to, the next item that is marked is on page seven, which is F one. So any item that requires discussion, or has, anyone has questions on prior to F seven, F one on page, on page seven? Okay. Dave?
Yes, normally, we wouldn't highlight this for discussion, but the, the applicant has submitted a request to waive the third reading at Thursday's meeting. We're in the building season, and they're actively looking to, to get this project approved so they can get building plans submitted and begin a design review process that they can't start until the zoning is finally approved. There has been no neighborhoods objection that has shown up to the city council on this yet. So again, we're just looking to, they're just looking to carve off a couple of weeks of the process and, and, and keep this project moving forward so they can get construction started here yet this spring.
Questions? Issues? Everyone okay with that? Go ahead.
So this is the, this is the property that is slated for development into the emergency room?
Sorry, I should have led it with that. Yeah, this is the St. Luke's on Armar. Yes, correct.
All right.
Okay, no, good. Any other questions? All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting, and we have a closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa. Can we have the legal counsel statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one I.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Please roll call.
Mr. Misscman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Menser? Yes. Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, this must be record time for, for a work session. Thank you all for joining us. We're adjourned.